The chair has informed that we have a quorum. The town meeting members will take their seats and the meeting will come to order. If you'd please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Let's, I have a few preliminary comments, mostly in response to questions that have been raised with the chair, but let's get the whole teller thing out of the way so we can start counting to two-thirds. Mr. Shymets, Mrs. Quinn, Mr. Hart, and Mr. Johnson, could you all please rise? You'll not be going home to watch the Celtics or the Bruins tonight. Please raise your right hand and do swear to give this town meeting an honest account of the vote as recorded and report the same to the chair. Thank you very much. So, one question that, I had a couple of questions that came into the chair, all of which I appreciated and thought were well-founded. One was asking town meeting members when they stand to address the town meeting to please state your name and if you know it, your precinct. If you don't know your precinct, you should look that up. Just to be clear, my name is Peter Haley, although I prefer to be known as Moderator Pete on the campaign trail. Another question that came up is, is there any process by which the town meeting or the chair fact checks the remarks or statements made by the speakers? A debate, people should weigh the credibility of the speaker, their trust and faith and belief in what they're saying, any other outside reference they have. Each of us need to make that determination or decision on our own. The chair does not have responsibility for fact checking the remarks that are made. With respect to, there was a question made about whether it's appropriate for people to make an argument to the town meeting and then absent themselves from the meeting. And the reference was to Mr. Rabe, who unfortunately had another philanthropic commitment he needed to make that evening, so he was unable to stay with us. There's no rule that you need to stay in the auditorium. People absenting themselves, you can make whatever conclusions you want from that. The chamber, in response to a town meeting member's question, was kind enough to clarify that the positions that it has articulated arise from a vote of the board of directors of the chamber and not from the whole group. There was a question about whether the positions of the chamber are owed a certain deference or acknowledgement. That argument was made by a particular speaker in part, although that's probably an over-generalization of the argument that was made. And obviously, no. Nobody's, you know, the voice of one citizen has no more weight than the voice of any other citizen. The fact that you're a property owner doesn't distinguish you from, you know, the parents who are renters and sending their children to school. The built environment in a community is important to all of us, regardless of our status. It certainly is a logical argument to say that those who own property may have insight with respect to the economic development of the community and the effect of certain articles. And certainly, that's something that they're free and should express if they think it will inform the debate. How it affects your vote is for you to weigh. It doesn't have any particular distinction. If the present moment has taught us anything, it is the absence of correlation between wealth and intelligence. The, speak for yourself, thank you. I'm not sure which part of that correlation I'd be speaking on, frankly. The, there was a question about whether or not the planning board and the select board should be agreeing more. The planning board and the select board have different briefs within the town government, and it's entirely appropriate for them to voice different positions on a particular question. One might hope with respect to smaller matters, you know, whether one article is repetitive of another, those sort of procedural things, one could hope would be resolved prior to presentation of the town meeting. That's likely the failure of the chair to explore that with more acuity. And finally, a town meeting member makes this point, which is, it is our normal practice to abstain from clapping or cheering after somebody presents. Usually, especially when people are making the town reports, we'll make an exception to that and certainly express the meeting's appreciation for the report and the work that's gone into it, and some moment of light applause is entirely appropriate. But we do want to sort of avoid the Roman Coliseum effect of cheering and booing to the extent that we can. We don't want to become the U.S. Senate or Congress where people are eating chicken to make a point. We do have certain standards here. So, this brings us to the first item of business, and just to be clear for the town meeting, we're going to start with reconsideration on two. We're going to go to seven and eight. We have to take 21 and 22 out of order to address an MBTA issue for which the transit authority has been kind enough to send a representative this evening. And accordingly, we'll be doing two, seven, eight, 21, 22, and then finishing the rest of the articles by 10:30. So, we'll start with the motion for reconsideration. Under our bylaws, that's the first thing that should be heard tonight. The motion was made by Heather Ron Marying, the chair of the planning board. In connection with the motion for reconsideration, debate as to the underlying motion is appropriate under the rules. The proponent has 10 minutes to present the question. It then is debatable. We'll take a vote. If two-thirds vote in favor of it, we'll return to a vote on the full question under Article Two. So, on the motion for reconsideration of Article Two, Ms. Von Mary.
Okay. Thank you, Moderator Pete, for your, for answering all the questions, although none of them were mine, so thank you very much, though, for that. So, I am coming back with Article Two, motion to reconsider. Brian presented it. There seemed to be some confusion and misconceptions that I wanted to really clear up with town meeting before we reconsider. I believe that some of the votes and decisions were based on those misunderstandings. So, currently, in the bylaw, in the zoning bylaw, there is existing language that talks about the Center Business District, which is town center, and that with every site plan review and special permit, that there should be a special hybrid group made up of the Historical Commission and the Design Review. With that, they meet and they provide one report to the planning board. So, we receive one report of three prior to the planning board hearing. Of that group, the Historical Commission is specifically made out of, has expertise in the historic preservation and implementation of the bylaws related to the preservation of historically significant structures. The other component is seven members of the Design Review, which includes artists, a residential architect, a design professional, a landscape architect, a commercial architect, an engineer, and a business owner. From those, only a subset group of those people come together to make one report under the CBD RS to the planning board. As I said, there seems to be some confusion and misconceptions, as there is more language than just that written in the zoning bylaw as it sits today, prior to any change made by town meeting regarding Article Two. It calls for two more reports, and therefore, two more meetings. So, if anyone who is on the Board of Commission, you know you're not allowed to talk about any topic without it being on your agenda. So, that calls for a meeting before the Historical Commission or the Design Review can make a determination if they will submit a report. Two more meetings. So, currently, there are a total of three meetings prior to the planning board. Two, one meeting from the Historical Commission of all seven members, report to the planning board. A report for the Design Review of all seven members, reports to the planning board. And in response, all three reports are then sent to the planning board. We are reducing the language to only include two potential reports. This language was recommended by legal counsel to be consistent with the zoning bylaw. It also includes the full Historical Commission report and the full Design Review report, but eliminates the hybrid of components of some people from Historical and some people from the Center Business, from the Design Review. Therefore, we are having two reports going to the planning board for our consideration to make decisions regarding the site plan, special permits, and all the permits that are coming through that process for the Center Business District. Three reports prior, we are now going to two reports prior to the planning board's review. This is still less reports and less meetings than currently sits through all the rest of the town outside of the Center Business District for special permits and site plan reviews. So, I hope you to reconsider your vote on Article number two.
Further on the question, the motion becomes, yes, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, John Miller, please take a second. Could we scroll back a couple on that presentation?
Sure. Thank you. Ms. Von Mary?
To, to, prior. Bill, Bill, there. I don't read that language, I've read this before. I don't read that language the way that Ms. Von Marying just read it. I read it as, this hybrid board can meet with representatives from the two committees. If the results of that hybrid meeting is a report that supports or trashes or ends a proposal, it's done. There's no requirement in 7315-2 for a report, the extra two reports that Ms. Von Marying mentioned. So, I think that, I think you're reading that bylaw in a way that it doesn't actually read. And I would argue that the existing process allows a streamlined, single, combined board from both Historical Committee and the DRC to deal with a proposal. And that is good, because if you're a real estate developer, you're trying to decide, do I continue to spend money on something? And the sooner you get reliable feedback from both Historical Committee, Historical Commission, and the Design Review Committee, then the sooner you can make an honest and a good decision. And I think that this is pretty clear, that what we have is pretty workable, and I would, again, argue against Article Two.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Ms. Richard?
I'm Jack Richard from Precinct One. Excuse me. I just want to address what came up earlier in the moderator's comments. My argument, and I apologize if it was misunderstood, would never be that the folks on the Chamber of Commerce are wiser than us because they do business, or they're richer, or they dress better, or any other reason. The reason we should take their opinions into account and give it great weight is they're the people from whom we're going to take the freedom. And I understand many people think that the entire community has, I think you characterized it, an interest in the building out of the whole town. Granted, but that has to be balanced, and, you know, we all might have an interest in the color of that person's house, but that person is primarily interested. And I think any group of people making decisions about other people's rights should give a little more weight to the people who are most directly affected by that. So, I'm sorry if the way I explained it led someone to believe that I thought they were of more value or of more insight or wisdom. That's not it. They just deserve more concern, because we're being told by the officials that the objects of this new law should be happy with it, because it's simpler and it's better and everything is great. But the people for whom, who have to live under the law are telling us, we don't like it. It's more complicated. It will make business and life generally more difficult for us. So, it's not because they're smarter, it's because they're the people whose freedom we're taking away, and I just think we should always be careful in doing that. So, if I explained it poorly last time, I apologize, but hopefully now everyone understands the reason for my objection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richard. And I just want to be clear, the chair didn't mean to adopt that characterization. I was just trying to respond to a few questions that I received, and I greatly appreciate your argument this evening, which has provided some helpful clarity. Mr. Wilson?
Roger Wilson, Precinct One. I wanted to check on why this process was set up in the first place. My understanding was that giving the planning commission, the planning board, the authority in the Central Business District, and creating this subcommittee was to expedite the process of developing the Central Business District, to reduce the number of meetings. And I don't believe that it was anticipated that the Historical Commission or the Design Review Committee would want to weigh in on every one of these if they were represented on the subcommittee. My understanding what the problem here is that the Historical Commission and the Design Review have wanted to weigh in even though they're represented in this new little subcommittee. And if I could have an explanation of why this thing was created in the first place.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. In response to the town meeting member's question? Mr. Zakelli, the town planner, Mr. Zakelli?
So, the reason why the CBD RS was created in the beginning was that we thought that rather than having to go to both the Historical Commission and the Design Review, that this hybrid group, the CBD RS, would be able to take care of Design Review, and that they wouldn't have the need to go to the Historical Commission or Design Review. They could do it in this one shot. In practice, although we don't, Mr. Miller is correct, we don't require the Historical Commission and the Design Review Committee to give us a report before we make a decision. You can see based on this slide that specifically, Design Review has many different types of expertise. So, only maybe two or three of these members from Design Review are coming to the CBD RS. So, they come with their own expertise, their own flavor to the review in terms of what they're looking at. And what Design Review and Historical Commission, the rest of them, so we can't tell them that they can't write a report. So, whether we want them to write a report or not, they have the right to write a report. So, what was happening was that we would get a report from the CBD RS that would focus on a subset of items. And then the rest of Design Review is like, well, we have a chance to review this. I'm a residential architect, and that's what this project is, or I'm a whatever, and this is what this project is, and I offer a different point of view. So, not that anyone's wrong or anything like that, it has to do with level of expertise. So, then we were receiving, again, a report from CBD RS, this combined group, but it was missing something that the rest of Design Review thought was very important. So, then we would be getting another report. So, the whole idea is that we were getting a maximum of three reports, and we want to turn the maximum of three reports into a maximum of two reports.
Yes, Mr. Gerius?
Hi, De, am I on? Hi, my name is De'Jarius, Precinct Eight. I'm also on the planning board, and my comments come from my experience on the planning board in dealing with permits from the Center Business District. Reason that we have the Design Review Committee and the Historical Commission provide reports for, for instance, in the ZBA, is that they get the best input from as many experts as possible so they can make a good decision. What we were finding in the Center Business District is because of the limited representation on the CBD RS, we were not getting as much expert opinions as we needed for the planning board to make a full-informed decision. Now, the Historical Commission and the Design Review Committee, Commission, provided that in separate reports. So, the point is, is that by saying we should only get things from the CBD RS, you're actually limiting the ability of the planning board to making a well-thought-out decision. And since we're talking about things that are going to be sticking around, hopefully, for 40 or 50 years, that's what we hope, we want to make sure that the decisions that are made by the permit granting authority are the best. And so, simply saying that, well, we should only have the CBD RS, is actually doing a disservice to that process, because it limits the amount of information that the board can work with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gerius. The motion comes before the town meeting on the motion to reconsider. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, Ed Levek, Precinct Two. Could I have an example of two, of where this became a problem, where the CBD RS did not provide enough information to the planning board, and where there was completely new or some important information that was shed either by the Historical Commission or Design Review that would have or did actually make an impact and change the outcome, or could have changed the outcome? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levek. In response to the town meeting member's question, somebody from the planning board or the town planner? In response to the town planner, Mr. Zakelli. Mr. Zakelli?
So, I cannot think of a very specific, okay? Okay, never mind then.
I'm taken. One specific one, for example, would be, there was a house down on Shore Road. It's actually one of the original houses of our town center. And when the CBD RS reviewed it, we got limited information from Historical, because Design Review Group overpowered the letter that we received. And with that, we then went back and we see the CBD RS report, and with that, we didn't have enough information actually regarding the historical components of it. We wanted more depth in terms of the architecture, of what's significant on the exterior of that house. And we also wanted more information regarding the landscaping and the hardscaping, because Shore Road is such a significant issue we have with parking on Shore Road, that we also needed Design Review and the expertise of other members of the Design Review who deal with specifically the landscaping of buildings to talk and give us information and more depth regarding that house as well. So, there's one example of, and that was on Shore Road. So, we ended up starting with the CBD RS and needing all reports from all to get a really informed decision so we could make a decision on the application.
Thank you, Ms. Von Mary. And question for the town meeting member?
Xenimar Schott, Precinct Eight. Is this one of the core missions of the Historical Commission and the Design Review? That's my first question. And my second question is, can the select board please explain again their position on this article? Thank you.
Certainly. So, the, let's take the first part of that question first. Are the principles and the positions articulated in Article Two part of the core mission of the planning board?
So, Historical Commission is under state law, so this is under the jurisdiction, and Design Review is under our town charter, and this is under their responsibility as well. And both are responsible, not only to reporting and giving recommendations to boards and commissions in the area of their expertise, but also to town meeting.
The second part of the town meeting member's question was that she recalled the opposition of the select board to the underlying motion, and asked for the benefit of the town meeting member in the meeting if the select board could repeat the basis for that opposition. In response, Mr. Goliathoff, Mr. Goliathoff, the chair of the select board?
Yeah, so, on the underlying motion on Article Two itself, we voted for against this and one in favor. The main reason being that while right now there could be three, the reality is only one report is required versus this would increase it to two reports. The other reason is that there hasn't been enough development in the CBD, not what the CBD intended, so we believe that there is some fix that is needed for the CBD, and we would like to work with the planning board on something that would result in more mixed use. We would like to see that happen and come more maybe at fall town meeting. As far as the motion to, for reconsideration, the majority of our board opposes that, mainly because there is no new information. And a motion to reconsider, just because the vote didn't go in favor, whether it was for Article 11 at last fall or this article in this town meeting, we think it sets a bad precedent that motion to reconsideration should be when new information comes along.
Further a question, Ms. Meister?
I just want to make it clear that if this were defeated, that what's going to stay in place is we've got the Historical Commission charged under state statute with advising town agencies on the preservation of the historic resources of the town. And as the board that's actually granting the permits for the Center Business District, we welcome that report. So, we're welcoming them, and they're ready to present their report. So, that's in one place. The other is Design Review, and they too are now reading or looking at these applications for CBD and actually for the entire town. And for our purposes, in the Center Business District where we're giving the report, we welcome that as well because of the various areas of expertise. And then- And then separate from that, then we'd still, if nothing, you know, if this is defeated, we'll still have this third hybrid committee. So we end up with three reports. If we can approve this, then we will end up dropping back to two reports. So in a way, it's relieving a lot of the volunteers here of just this extra kind of activity that really doesn't add anything as far as we're concerned. Where all the ideas come together, recommendations which can be in conflict, but not everybody always agrees, but where it all gets pulled together is at the table of the permit granting authority, in the case of the Center Business District, the planning board. So we just are, we're bringing in information, that's what this is. Separate point, but relevant, Heather's last slide. If you are getting a special permit even in a residential neighborhood, for example, you're putting on a kitchen addition and it's going into the setback, which is very common in Winchester, that will be reviewed by the Historical Commission, the Design Review Committee, and the planning board. So there will be three reviews going into the zoning Board of Appeals. So what we're, what we have here, and if we can approve this, is just two reviews coming into the planning board, which is actually a pretty low threshold and should not be considered all that burdensome. Many of us, myself included, have gone through getting a special permit in this town. It's really not that onerous. So I do hope you support this recommendation to simplify the process. Thank you.
Motion comes before the town meeting on the motion for reconsideration. If the motion passes, we'll return to debate on Article Two. If the motion fails, Article Two will remain defeated and we will move on. All those in favor of reconsideration, please rise and the tellers will count. Mr. Shymets, if you could count the Select Board. Mr. Johnson, if you could count the planning board. Mrs. Quinn, if you could count everybody up to Mr. Clemson. Mr. Clemson, raise your hand, please. And Mr. Hart, if you could count everybody on the other side of Mr. Clemson. All those opposed, please rise. One hundred and forty-two members of the town meeting having voted. Ninety-five votes in the affirmative required for passage. Eighty-four members having voted affirmatively. The motion for reconsideration fails. This brings us to Article Seven. Under Article Seven, and the Chair has determined that the Chair will allow debate on Articles Seven and Eight together. Under Article Seven, the motion as made varies slightly from that that appears in your motion booklet. You should have a handout that says revised language for Articles Seven and Eight. Under Article Seven, brought by the planning board, the revised language under Section 4.1.2K does not apply to domes, towers, or spires of buildings provided such features are in no way used for living purposes. Chimneys may exceed the maximum building height by fifteen feet. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment, solar panels, elevator overrides, and the necessary screening may exceed the maximum building height by four feet or the minimum height required by the state building code if greater. See definition, height of a building. Under Article Seven, the planning board by its chairperson, Ms. Vaughn Mary. Ms. Vaughn Mary.
One moment.
The Chair reviewed the motion as revised and together with Town Council believes that adequate notice of the motion has been provided by the warrant and accordingly finds the motion as stated in its amended form to be in order. So it's moved and seconded. The town approved Article Seven as set forth in the revised language handed out to the town meeting. Ms. Vaughn Mary.
Thank you. So currently, there is an issue with our building heights in town. Specifically, it's the language that is used to define what our building heights are. In Section 4.1.2, which is the dimensional chart of all height, of building heights, there is a sub-note of K. And the existing language says that it does not apply to chimneys, ventilators, and other structural features usually carried above roofs. The very big issue actually is "and other structural features." When we go out into town and we look around, when people hear that our maximum building height, let's say, is forty-five feet, they expect that building to be forty-five feet. So we have the expectation of the residents and everyone in town that the building height is a specific height, and we have the delivery completely different from what that is. So what the planning board is trying to do is make a modification to that, those sub-notes, to make it very clear what we do allow above that building height and what we don't. Here's an example of something that is currently in GBD, GBD Two, that was recently built. And the expectation is that the building's height, it would be maximum of forty-five feet, which is the yellow area. However, one of the biggest issues we've received and the most communication we've seen so far this year has actually been that this building is not forty-five feet tall, it is much higher because of the word "other structural features." This "other structural feature" adds approximately thirteen feet of height on top of the building. When speaking to Town Council exactly about what other structural features can entail, it can be anything built on top of our buildings that is not used for living purposes. So we have an expectation throughout town using historical and current new renovation buildings where our mechanicals and our elevators tend to go within the building. We also, when you look at and you look out into our buildings, we always talk about the streetscape and what you see when you walk the town. We also don't talk about what you look out when you see the skylines of our town. We have an absolutely beautiful town with amazing architecture, and what we're seeing is that people are pushing the limits of what those other structure features actually These are all buildings that are currently three stories tall, and all their mechanicals and their elevators are embedded inside that, the heights of the buildings, and all of them meet code.
Mr. Ollie's House.
We have in town, when we do our own buildings for our government buildings, we hire an architect. And that architect works very hard to make sure that all of our mechanicals and our elevators are concealed inside and are not visible from our public ways. Public ways are not only just from the streets. We have many places in town which are high up and are visible to our roofscapes, especially with the town, with the town MBTA, with the tracks running through, we can see the top of all of our buildings. With that, we discussed what are the expectations? What do the residents in town expect from us when we talk about building heights? They expect that the elevators override has minimized visual impact on top of our buildings. They expect that solar panels are allowed, and they expect that HVAC equipment, if it's placed on the roof of a building, is screened. In Article Seven, we are specifically talking about everywhere outside of the town center. This is a language that we are proposing. We are proposing that the building height does not apply to towers or spires of buildings provided such features are in no way used for living purposes. Chimneys may exceed the maximum height by fifteen feet. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment, solar panels, elevator overrides, and the necessary screening may exceed the maximum building height by four feet or the minimum height required by state building code if greater. It also says see definition of height of building, which is how we define mean grade to the top of the roof outside of the town center. And Article Eight deals specifically with the Center Business District. It has the same exact components in it, organized slightly differently just due to the way that the zoning language is for the Center Business District, which is the town center. Article Seven and Eight is taking that expectation and making the delivery of what we get in our buildings to align. The high dimension of our building heights, we have exceptionally high heights as of now. We talked about it in previous articles on last Monday. We, to get these buildings within these heights is very well achievable. Woburn, for example, has no place over forty feet in their entire town except for the corridor on 128 and 93, which is where all the hotels are. They have nothing over forty feet. Here, I sketched a building for you just to see. This is a building that is thirty-six feet tall. It's three stories. This would be anything that would be allowed in GBD One, Two, or Three. It'd be One if it was all commercial. Two is a mix of residential and commercial, but, commercial on the first floor, residential above. That's thirty-six feet. We have an additional nine feet above that for them to work with to get their equipment and all their extra structural elements inside that dimension. We also are offering a four feet, which is new with the addition to, with the changes, to also try to make that work as well. Look forward to any of your questions, and I hope you vote in favor of this article.
We have a recommendation from the Select Board. Mr. Goliath, if you could address Seven and Eight, please.
So the Select Board, I don't want to steal your notes. The Select Board voted unanimously to support both Seven and Eight. We feel like adding the four feet for the elevator override, so if there's any concerns that not having that would have any issues with encroaching on the third story. So we agree that this is necessary.
Motion comes before the town meeting, is made by the planning board. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My only concern about this is the effect that this would have on structures that do not meet this requirement, that pre-existing structures would become non-conforming under this bylaw, which could have some detrimental effects on property owners. And I'm wondering whether that four-foot requirement, limitation of no more than four feet over the maximum height for things like elevator boxes, that seems pretty small. I'm not an expert on architectural matters, but my principal concern is the fact that this will create more non-conforming uses in the town, and that we ought to be careful about that.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Mr. Conti's question, the town meeting members' question is, what effect will this have on existing structures that meet the older bylaw provisions? And if the planning board can address the effect on elevator hoistways? And in response, Mr. MacCorious, Town Council. Mr. MacCorious.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, for non-conforming structures, non-conforming structures do have some existing protections under Chapter Forty-eight regardless of what kind of zoning change it is. Residential, non-conforming structures, single and two-family residential especially, have additional protections, more so than commercial structures. With respect to the four-foot height, that was taken directly from the building code so that the minimum height is in the building code already. And to add to the grandfathering protections, some of those extensions to a non-conforming structure are sometimes also allowed by special permit depending on their nature. It's hard to speak for every case.
Yes, Mr. McQuan.
Building code covers rooftop structures and things like that. And just so everyone's aware, penthouses in compliance with these sections, we can go to roof deck, height above roof deck for screens or mechanical equipment. The building code says you can go eighteen feet above the roof, final roof plane. So I just say it's a little weird, and I'd ask the legal team to respond to Section 1510. You can go to any article in there relating to heights of equipment above a roof under IBC 215, 2015.
Town meeting members' question, if the, if proponents could address either through council or themselves directly, the parts of the building code that the town meeting member has made citation to. In response, the town planner, Mr. Zakely, Mr. Zakely.
I'll respond to the, to the one part where you're, so you're talking about saying that the building code's saying that it can go above the roof line. We're not concerned with the roof line, we're concerned with the max height. So we're saying whatever the...
Top level of the roof, yeah. Line of the roof deck.
Okay, but even so, the top level of a roof deck, whatever that height is, you can, let's say the, it's only a ten-foot tall structure, you can go thirty-nine feet above. The point is, it has nothing to do with the top of the roof. It's, we're talking about max height. So we're saying you can go four feet above the max height, so that's forty-nine feet. You're saying that it is allowed to go eighteen feet above the roof line, it can go eighteen feet above the roof line as long as it's below forty-nine feet.
Thank you, Mr. Zakely. Further, the question, Mr. Nixon, Mr. Nixon.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Chris Nixon, Precinct One. I had several concerns about this when we met last week, and I appreciate the time from Ms. Vaughn Mary. I had the opportunity to talk to her again before we met tonight. I wanted to share with everyone that the building code doesn't apply to specific buildings. It applies to building types, and it applies to use groups. If you read the building code, it doesn't tell you how to build a building. Roof penetrations of the variety that are mentioned in the article, there are, I think, vents is mentioned. I wonder about fresh air intakes, I wonder about exhaust flues. Roof penetrations are integral parts of a number of different building systems. Some of them are designed by architects, some by plumbing and mechanical engineers. And in fact, the diameter of a roof penetration, the height of a roof penetration, and in some cases in food service, even the very material that it's made of, are integral to the performance of that building system. So I would encourage the town meeting to just reflect that architects and engineers are licensed for a reason. They look at a set of problems, they come up with a solution, and ultimately, we've got licensed folks who are stamping drawings who may in fact say that a number of roof penetrations must go beyond the maximum building height, and in fact, beyond four feet. It's not even always just a consideration of the building itself. If, for instance, we talk about removing exhaust combustion gases from a building, there may be an adjacent structure with a fresh air intake, and the engineer or architect is concerned about exhaust gas entremet in an adjacent building. Again, it's about life, safety, and welfare. I would also point out that I'm fond of saying any architect who brags that his or her buildings meet code, it's just another way of saying if I forgot one thing, my building would have been illegal. So code, you know, code is really just the minimum. There are many examples of building insurers who will say to owners and developers, it's not good enough that you meet code. They're actually about limiting loss and liability. It's not at all unusual for building insurers to say to an owner or a developer, you have to go above and beyond the code, or you don't get a policy. So the last comment I might make is that with respect to the detail that we're seeing in the article, in my mind, it almost presumes that a project is further along in its gestation. So when developer is, and a gentleman down here mentioned it earlier tonight, developers or owners are going forward in an approvals process, they're having to spend a lot of money on design professionals, and they're looking for that approval so that they can then really put the pedal to the floor, bring in a full team, and get the drawings done. And I am concerned that there be requirements for things like specific height of roof penetrations and showing specific roof equipment, which at a schematic stage might be two air handlers that are five feet tall, and then by the end of the project, it's now three, and they're six feet tall because simply nobody had time to study the problem. And my last comment with respect to the, I think the photos Ms. Vaughn Mary showed were terrific because I think they really speak to the intent, which I appreciate. But the photo of Lincoln, I had to just go check Google Maps real quick, because I've been on Capitol long enough listening to Mr. Lawson about changing the filters on the air handlers. We do have a number of air handlers on the roof of the Lincoln School. They're taller than four feet. But the point is, when you're down on the road on the sidewalk and you look up, you don't see it. And I think that's really what this is about. It's about sort of the curb appeal, right, of our buildings. But I'm concerned this one maybe gets into the weeds a little too much. And so I would respectfully move for indefinite postponement on Articles Seven and Eight.
Mr. McQuan, believe me, the Chair will be available to you shortly, but if you, just give me a second. There's been a motion to indefinitely postpone consideration of Article Seven. The motion requires a majority vote. The motion... The motion is in order. If the article is indefinitely postponed, it will not go forward at this town meeting until it is, and will lie until it's brought up at a future town meeting. So, on the motion for indefinite postponement, the motion's been... The motion is being brought before the meeting just on Article seven, which is the motion before the meeting. The chair allowed combined debate, but consideration of the motions together wouldn't be appropriate. So, with respect to, under Article seven, the motion to indefinitely postpone, all those in favor of indefinite postponement, please say aye. Opposed? The noes have it. The motion for indefinite postponement fails. Mr. Conti. Is there a second? All those in favor of indefinite postponement, which will be to terminate consideration of Article seven, please rise, and the tellers will count. Twelve. Seventeen. Ten. Twenty-six. Fifty town meeting members having voted in favor of indefinite postponement, one hundred against. The motion for indefinite postponement fails. This brings us to consideration of Article seven, which requires a two-thirds vote. Yes, for what purpose do you raise your hand, Mr. Jarius? Certainly. Mr. Jarius with a clarification and comment.
Dejarius, Precinct Eight. I want to point out that the language specifies that the height of the equipment is four feet or the minimum height required by the state building code. So, if your ventilation shaft needs to be ten feet tall, it will be permitted. So, there have been a number of comments saying that it would be limited to four feet, but if the building code permits it to be higher, then it, or requires that it be higher, then it will be higher. If, on the other hand, an architect or a plumber decides to put up a thirty-foot chimney where it's not required, or I'm sorry, a thirty-foot ventilation shaft on top of a forty-foot building, current zoning allows that, which I think we could all agree would be a little ludicrous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jarius. Mr. Miller, further in the question. Excuse me? Yes.
I wanted to echo what Chris Nixon just said. I think this article fundamentally misunderstands the design process. I taught construction management at MIT for ten years. Engineers and architects are engaged by, by people who own buildings to explore in a schematic way what make, what could make sense in a redevelopment. And Mr. Nixon said it perfectly well. In the early stages of this, there's been no heavy commitment to a design. There's no heavy commitment to a particular set of HVAC equipment. That gets finalized as the, as the guts of the building gets, gets determined through the detailed design process. But that happens only after there's a signal from the town planner, from the town planning board, from the, from the historical commission, from the design review committee, that this project makes sense and that that money is worth spending. And what this article does is throw that on its head. So, what it would require is that a developer spend, go much, much deeper into the design process, far past schematic, far, far past preliminary design, into almost a complete design. And you need to know, how big does the equipment have to be? How much, how, what are the available suppliers of that equipment? And what's the trade-off between having a very, very large piece of equipment that's only three foot eleven high and, and a bigger box that's more cubic that maybe is six feet high? And those decisions are not made at the time posited by this article. And what this article really signals is, don't, you don't know how this is going to work out as you try to, as you're about to spend the money. And it's really a signal, don't, don't do the development. And I would urge the, the select board to reconsider about, you know, you mentioned, one of the selectmen mentioned that they're trying to figure out how to work with the planning board to get the CBD to be redeveloped more effectively. This is a step in the wrong direction. You're sending a signal that it's going to be very, very expensive and, and uncertain in this entire process. So, I'm opposed to both Article seven and eight.
Further in the question, Ms. Welch from the select board. Ms. Welch.
I promise I'll be brief, but I wanted to, first of all, thank everyone who's spoken tonight on, on this article, on both of them, seven and eight. I have so much respect for our businesses in Town Center and elsewhere in town. I have so much respect for Mr. Nixon and also Mr. Miller. I also think that so many people in this room have so many fantastic backgrounds that are all equally relevant to every article, including these. And I also wanted to note that having previously been on this planning board, currently on the select board, I am definitely pro-development, okay? Obviously, most, many people in our town are. This art, these articles are simply saying, hey, is there a way to, should we update or modernize this particular provision that has to do with what's going on on the roof of these buildings? This is not, these are not anti-development articles. And with all due respect to suggest otherwise, I fear that, that makes people think that they should perhaps not even discuss these. And I don't think that makes sense. I think that in our town, everybody has an opinion and a view, and when it comes to what buildings look like in our town, whether it's Town Center or elsewhere, that we mutually respect, obviously, the businesses, all those investments, but also it's important that the town process is consistent and is kind of equally structured so that the review is consistent. It gives credibility to these all volunteer boards. And I just wanted to note a couple of things in particular. These articles, they address something that needs addressing. I'm not exactly sure how old the current bylaws are, but they're old. They're saying that anything above the roof can be fifteen feet above the roof line. So, if we don't sort of address and modernize these, then that remains the case, and that's really important. And I credit the planning board for going out of their way to sort of spot here and there when bylaws seem to cover topics that haven't been covered in a while. And I also wanted to note that these suggested changes include solar panels as well as elevator overruns. They include a lot of equipment that didn't even exist at the time that the current language was originally drafted. I also wanted to indicate, while I'm not an expert, I don't pretend to be the expert that Mr. Nixon is. I have done a fair amount of land use law. I'm a litigator. And I do know that there are a lot of great architects. There's a lot of great architects like Mr. Nixon. I'm not trying to personalize this, but I have great respect for him. But there's many architects who, part of their business is to inform clients and towns what the roof's going to look like. And in many instances, with respect to the elevator, many of these developers know from day one where they want to put the elevator. This is not necessarily some sort of, kind of an accidental piece of equipment. The example that Ms. Von Mary carefully showed the planning board and, the town meeting and talked about was an example of an elevator overrun structure that exists on a new building. So, most developers know often if they want the elevator in the front of the building or the back of the building, for example. And this example that's been given about elevator overruns, that's a piece of equipment that's different than if there's some sort of unforeseen situation. So, what we're focusing here on are things that are, it's important to modernize these articles. Otherwise, we can have fifteen-foot structures, and the planning board already thoughtfully mentioned the issue with that. And then also, it's important to recognize that in most instances, what we're talking about are things that are known. With all due respect to some of the recent comments by those who have recently just gotten up, most of what's being reviewed here are items that are known, that they, there is going to be an elevator in the building or not. So, it's not like something that has to be wait, that they have to wait till the last draft. And I also wanted to comment that many cities and towns, I'd like to say most, but sitting here today, I can't, you know, verify that, but many cities and towns, including Boston, have very specific guidelines, as I'm sure many of you know in this room, about the height of structures on top of roofs. And the fact that Winchester, this beautiful town, is operating under these very old, archaic bylaws on this topic, just needs some addressing. That's all the planning board is trying to do. And they've been thoughtful enough to consider so many comments that have been brought to them to make these, I think, reasonable amendments. So, I guess I've already kind of spoken too long, but I have so much deference for everybody and respect for everybody who's spoken, but I just want to make sure that the focus here is really on what the planning board is trying to do, which is not a lot. It's simply trying to modernize these laws that already exist. And I really very much suggest that the town, a town meeting vote in their favor. Thank you.
Motion comes before, yes, Mr. Pruitt. Mr. Pruitt moves the question. So, Mr. Rabe from the Chamber of Commerce had asked me earlier to speak. We're not going to move the question because the chair's ready to call a question, but what we're going to do is allow the chamber, which asked for an opportunity to speak earlier to speak, we're going to take a vote to allow Ms. Rabe, who's a citizen of the community, but not a member of the town meeting, to vote, to speak to us, to address the motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms. Rabe.
I hope you left it for me this time. I just wanted to kind of reiterate something, and I want to make a general comment that's going to apply to this, these articles, but also ones nine, ten, eleven later on. But I won't speak specifically about those. But I do want to say the Chamber of Commerce is really in favor of keeping the charm and character of Winchester. We don't want anything ostentatious or anything that doesn't fit the character of town, any more than anyone else does here either. And we also want this place to, the town of Winchester to be a good place and a welcoming place for businesses to come into town and developers to build and make this town more vibrant. We really want a downtown that's very vibrant, and that requires some additional building in the downtown district. And that's, I think, one reason why some of these things have been passed recently. We've been seeing a very big interest in activity in building downtown. But some of these unintended consequences that can happen, like I mentioned last week, that if the zoning becomes too restrictive, the developers will simply go forty-b, bypass the zoning bylaws altogether, and you're already seeing this in some projects. So, you've got to keep that in mind, that if we get too restrictive, people can bypass these altogether. Also, the tax base is an important aspect of these projects. New development brings more taxes to town. Now, as an example, Fells Hardware recently withdrew their project. That project alone would add a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the tax base each year. Now, if that project doesn't get built for six years, that's almost a million dollars in lost revenue for the town, and that's just one project. We just had a town override of twelve million dollars. Think about how many teachers or first responders, the extra tax, the tax base could help with the town. And that's just, like I said, one project. But also, I spoke with Kevin, Kevin Ryan from Fells Hardware, and he mentioned, and this is just one example, these unintended consequences, that if some of these bylaws get passed, he will not have a hardware store to pass on for generations and to serve the town of Winchester. That's something that we don't think about as we make these decisions, but it has long-term consequences on this town. And so, by having those pass, well, one, we won't have a hardware store here in five years. But also, the town is in the middle of a multi-year master planning process, and we believe that the best form of action is to approve Article twenty-six and develop the master plan for the downtown Winchester and have a comprehensive plan for downtown Winchester and overhaul the zoning bylaws at that time that correspond with the master plan for Winchester. Now, regarding Article seven, you know, we talk about the, just include the elevator height in the height of the building. Essentially, that does reduce the height of the building by at least five feet. Now, if we don't want a thirteen-foot elevator shaft above the building, that's fine, or we don't want to see it from the street, that's fine, but that's not what this is saying. Essentially, what this is saying is that we're going to be reducing the height of every building that's built in Winchester by at least five feet, which therefore reduces, or very well could reduce, the height of every building in the one place where we can have multifamily housing in town by an additional floor. And so, we might not think about that right now, but, because in reality, this is all about the Berlin Main Street, the thirteen-foot monstrosity above the building. Why don't we just address that particular issue, then reduce all the building heights throughout town? You don't necessarily realize what could happen as a result of this, but that is one of the, you know, we, keep that in mind, though, all these things. So, we would encourage you to vote against Article seven and eight. And like I mentioned last time, it is a board of directors. There's twenty-two members of the town, of the town of Winchester that are very, very well-respected and very well-versed in their own professions. And it was not the entire Chamber of Commerce, but the board of directors that voted against this, but all very well-respected, very knowledgeable on this topic, and we would vote, we would request that you vote against this, this Article seven and eight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rabe. Yes, I was going to ask, I'm going to allow one further comment for reasons I don't particularly understand, but it's kind of sheer moderator incompetence, but, and I apologize for prefacing your remarks with my own problems, but the town meeting member.
That's all right. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I have, I have a number of questions about what was just said, and I appreciate that there was a clarification that he was speaking on behalf of the board and not the members, and I have a number of questions. One is, if the chair of the Chamber of Commerce board informed the members overall of what position they were going to be taking on these and sought feedback from their members on how all of the business owners who are members of the chamber felt about these, I have a question as to whether or not any businesses went to the planning board or the town planner to give input on this, whether the board went to the planning board or the town planner to give input on this, and a number of statements made about Fells Hardware, one, that there would be no new development if these passed, and another, that it would bring in millions or a million dollars in tax revenue, and I'm curious about the number of residential units, the potential new students, and whether or not that could actually cost us more in expenditures versus revenue. So, it's multiple questions to address what was, what was just said here today.
So, just, just to be clear with respect to the debate, it's not a debate between parties. The chair will afford the chamber an opportunity to respond if it cares to, but they're under no obligation to. So, the questions, to the extent that you have them, should be directed to the proponents, certainly with respect to the issue of whether or not the chamber approached the planning board with respect to input on this issue. Mr. Zakelli or the chair of the planning board can respond to that. And if Ms. Rabe cares to respond to the other inquiries, I'll allow him, but it's, the focus of our debate is not intended to be a point, counterpoint situation between representatives. You certainly can make those points and have made them in the context of argument. So, in response to the town meeting members' question about whether or not the chamber sought an opportunity to provide input, Ms. Von... So, Ms. Rabe, if you could just wait for me to recognize you, I would appreciate that. And Ms. Von Mary, the answer that has, that the chamber representative said was that the chamber did not seek an opportunity to provide input to the planning board, if you could confirm that.
There are members on the executive board of the chamber who receive copies of all of our agendas and meeting minutes. They did not choose to provide any communication with us, or we did not receive anything from them in return, but they do, it is part of their responsibilities, is my understanding of the chamber, to report back to the chamber and report to us. So, they have been receiving copies of our meeting agendas, they are on that email list. In addition with that, we, there are members of the chamber who are not on that executive board, who have reached out to the planning board and the town planner with their input and feedback regarding this. And some of the things that we have heard specifically is, what about the current businesses that are in these areas? And what are we doing to support them? Because if we are not regulating and we're not monitoring the traffic flow and the safety issues of the, what the properties are, new developments that are going in around them, how are we supporting our current businesses? So, a lot of the handful of the current business owners, specifically in GBD 2 and 3, with regards to the articles that we've already discussed, have come in and met with the town planner. I have also, whenever we go and frequent their businesses, because we do live in the town, they always give us their feedback and talk to us about what is impacting them and how they would like to have more opportunity for feedback to the process as well, because these do impact our businesses, which are currently bringing in revenue for our town. So, there's that point.
So, Ms. Von Mary, I, the chair would just like to clarify that the answer to the question raised by the town meeting member and which you are addressing is whether or not the chamber sought an opportunity for input. Ms. Rabe, on behalf of the chamber, said it did not, and you have confirmed that. So, that, we appreciate your response. We're now going to proceed to a vote.
Okay. That sounds good.
With respect to Article 7. So, Article 7 is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 7, please rise in the telegraph count. Twenty-one. Excuse me? Thirty-three. All those opposed, please rise. 146 members of the town meeting having voted, 98 votes in the affirmative required for passage, 103 members of the town meeting having voted affirmatively, Article 7 passes. This brings us to Article 8. Under Article 8, the motion as presented is slightly revised as stated in the handouts to the town meeting members, revised language for Articles 7 and 8. Article 8 seeks to revise 7.3.13.3, height exceedance. The maximum height of a structure shall not exceed the distance in feet as set forth in the height map, 7.3.2 above, except under the following condition. The heights in the height map, 7.3.2, do not apply to domes, towers, or spires of buildings, provided such features are in no way used for living purposes. Chimneys may exceed the maximum building height by 15 feet. Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning equipment, solar panels, elevator overrides, and the necessary screening may exceed the maximum building height by four feet, or to the minimum height required by the state building code if greater Article 8, in which we've had presentation of the debate earlier, in accordance with the allowance of the chair, makes the same amendments as did Article 7. A two-thirds vote being required, the chair will attempt a voice vote in the first instance. All those in favor of the passage of Article 8, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All those in favor of Article 8, please stand in the telegraph count. Eleven.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Twenty.
All those opposed, please rise.
Three.
Three.
Four.
Four.
Fifteen.
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 147 members of the town meeting having voted, 98 votes in the affirmative required for passage, 110 votes having been cast in the affirmative, Article 8 passes. We are considering, under the warrant in the town meeting, Articles 21 and 22, which require the participation of Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority. Its representatives have been kind enough to join us this evening, and accordingly, the chair seeks a motion to suspend the rules to allow us to take the articles out of order to allow debate on Articles 21 and 22. The chair looking for a motion. Second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Will now proceed to consideration of Article 21. Under Article 21, which appears on page 27 of the blue-covered motion booklet, is to see if the town will vote to authorize a select board to convey to the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority permanent and temporary easement in the areas identified on the preliminary land acquisition plan. The language of Article 21 is as printed on page 27 of the motion booklet, and the motion to be made under Article 21 is moved in second to the town approved Article 21 as printed in the warrant. On behalf of the proponents, the select board.
Good to see everyone. I have to take one quick minute and wish my 10-year-old happy birthday today. I am very thankful that she didn't give me much of a guilt trip for missing birthday dinner, so, happy birthday, Sophie. So, Article 21, so the town has been working with the MBTA since 2010 on the design for the reconstruction of the Winchester Center commuter rail station. The existing station and rail line were reconstructed in the mid-1950s. So, some of the reasons, as you probably all know, for renovation is, number one, it's in pretty bad disrepair and fairly unsightly. It does not meet MBTA commuter rail design standards, and it does not meet current ADA or Massachusetts Architectural Access Board requirements for accessibility. So, the project includes reconstruction of the existing ramps to meet the ADA requirements, installation of elevators at the southern end, installation of a high-level platform, and the extension of the northern station ramp across Quill Rotary to Shore Road. And I would like to welcome and thank Desiree Patrice, Senior Project Manager for the MBTA, and Mark Thompson, Project Manager for Jacobs, who's the engineering and transit and rail consultant, for being here tonight. And they'll be available to answer questions if you have them. So, the MBTA is seeking temporary and permanent easements related to the construction at the following locations. And I'll pull up the map. It's really hard to see. So, the following locations, Lairway Road, Shore Road, Waterfield Lot, and the Aburjana Lot Parking Lots. So, Article 21 would give the select board the authority to convey these easements to the MBTA for the renovation of the train station. And the select board voted 5-0 favorable action on Article 21.
Thank you very much. May we have a recommendation from the finance committee?
Finance committee voted unanimously for favorable action.
May we have a recommendation from the planning board? Ms. Von Mary, it's the chair.
The planning board recommends favorable action as well unanimously.
It's a two-thirds vote. Further on the question, chair will attempt a voice vote in the first instance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Chair declares vote unanimous. Happy birthday, Sophie.
Thank you, guys.
That may be the key, more birthday wishes here.
I was getting home earlier.
Article 22, under Article 22, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to acquire by purchase, donation, and domain or otherwise certain parcel as set forth on page 29 of the motion booklet. Under Article 22, it's moved in second to the town approve Article 22 as printed in the warrant. On behalf of the proponents, the select board, Ms. Shapiro, Ms. Shapiro.
Thank you. So, the select board is interested in redeveloping the town-owned Waterfield Parking Lot. And as you can see in this, this drawing, there's a small piece of land, it's about 1,800 square feet, that's currently owned by Pan Am, a railroad company that's actually based in Billerica. So, Article 22 would give the select board the authority to acquire the land. I do want to mention that it does not provide appropriations, so if there were to be, if Pan Am would like us to buy the, the land, we would come back to the town meeting for approval of the appropriation. This is just, gives the select board permission to negotiate and begin talks.
Thank you very much. We have a recommendation from the finance committee. Mr. Cattillo, it's the chairperson, Mr. Cattillo.
Finance committee voted unanimously for favorable action.
And a recommendation from the planning board. It's the chairperson, Ms. Von Mary, Ms. Von Mary.
Planning board recommends favorable action unanimously as well.
Two-thirds vote being required, the chair will attempt a voice vote in the first instance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair declares vote unanimous. The motion passes. We are going to take a very short recess before we return to debate under Article 9. I'd like to thank the representatives of Jacobs Engineering, the MBTA. And so, we are going to recess. Now, if you could all stay in your seat for one moment, because our friend, Mr. McQuan, would like to make an announcement with respect to a informal meeting unconnected to the town meeting that he seeks to convene. Mr. McQuan, here's your moment. So, the chair will make two further points, or three further points, before we go out to the Girl Scout table. One, the Bruins are leading 1 to nothing, the Celtics are behind by 8.7870. And when you proceed outside, if you encounter our town council, Mr. McCorius, you can congratulate him on being recently named one of the up-and-coming lawyers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Quite an honor and distinction, a well-deserved. We'll be in recess until 9:05, 10 minutes, 9:05.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Alan, and we are here at Winchester High School for the second session of Winchester's Spring 2019 Town Meeting here on May 6th. We open tonight, the town meeting is in recess, so let's recap what we've heard so far. The moderator made some early comments on civility, and some editorial comments on civility at town meeting, and remarks that should be directed to the moderator, and some comments on some inappropriate remarks. So, we heard from his comments. So, the first article, the first item on tonight's agenda was a vote to reconsider Article 2, which had failed. And Article 2 was to change the review process for Senator Business District special permits. So, the Article 2 had proposed, let's go back up a bit, there were subcommittees of the Historical Commission and the Design Review Committee intended to speed the process for recommendations made to the planning board in the, for projects in the central business district. The intent originally was to speed the process by not having applicants appear before the full board. This article, which was defeated back last Monday, was to change that process to revert back to review by the entire board of the Historical Commission and the Design Review, which would make a recommendations, their recommendations to the planning board. We heard from a town meeting member who was against it, because he said this is a streamlined process, not involving the entire boards. Brian Zakelli, the town planner, says that the full committees, especially on historical, have varied expertise, and it was better that the entire committees be allowed to, to review these. Chairman of the Board of Selectmen said the select board, select board, excuse me, the select board opposed reconsideration because no new information had been brought forward. And the town meeting failed, once again, failed to reconsider this Article 2. Article 7 was also brought by the planning board, and it was adding certain restrictions to equipment allowed on a roof and some height restrictions. For instance, certain structures on the roof would be, would have to conform to the total height of the building. For example, like an elevator shaft, if it extended too far above the roof line, the entire building would have to be lowered to accommodate that within the current zoning bylaws. Article 7 was for that with outside the central business district, GBD 1, GBD 2, GBD 3, which are the zoning areas going up north Main Street. Heather Von Mary said that the mechanicals on roofs can be contained or concealed, that the purpose of this was to remove unsightly mechanical structures from the roof of buildings and keep them hidden. The select board supported it. How, and the, we heard comments from Craig Rabey, President of the Chamber of Commerce. He opened his remarks by saying the chamber wants to keep the character in downtown, but also said that some of these restrictions can stifle development. He said if the, if the restriction, if restrictions on height are too restrictive, it will encourage developers to just give up and, or go through a 40B process to sidestep the restrictions. And he also said, you know, that some of these projects, if they're not built or they're scaled down, will cost the town in tax revenue. He said the chamber's opinion was the best proceed, the best action for this is to wait for a master plan that's due sometime next year, and then review zoning requirements. Seven and eight were essentially about the same article, one applying to general business district, one to the center business district, and the town meeting passed them both. We skipped ahead to Article 21, because we had some representatives of the MBTA here in case they were needed. Article 21 allows the select board to grant some easements to the MBTA during their reconstruction of the train station, some even for new ramps and structures. So, it allows the select board to grant easements to the MBTA to construct these about, beyond their current property. And that passed, town meeting passed that. Article 22 was a proposal, the select board is seeking proposals for redevelopment of the Waterfield Lot, currently where the Chamber of Commerce office is, and the two-level parking lot on Waterfield Road. And apparently, a small piece of that is owned by, I believe, a non-functioning railroad, the Pan Am Railroad. And this authorized the selectmen to seek to acquire that piece of property, which is about 17, about 1,800 square feet. And it is, it appears to be located right at the entrance driveway to the upper parking lot. And the town meeting also passed that. So, that is, that is how we stand here at 9 o'clock. We're in recess, we'll be back in a few minutes, town meeting will be back in session in a few minutes, and I'll be back at the end with a recap of tonight's activity. So, stay with us.
The town meeting will come to order, and the members will take their seats.
There's a lot, like, more here than there is. Yeah. Hard to blame them. I believe it's by good.
The meeting will come to order, and the members will take their seats, please.
Nine, yep. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think if we, I think we just coast right towards nine. I think these things might go fast. Yeah, I know.
I just want to note for the record that for those people responding to the text messages about what they like most about the town, somebody's response was mansplaining. So, you know, I'm happy to accommodate that. The, this brings us to Article 9, an article brought by the Planning Board to see if the town will vote to amend Section 7.3.16.11, utilities plan of the Winchester zoning bylaw. The amendment is as set forth on page 10 of the motion booklet under Article 9, and the motion under Article 9 is, it's moved and seconded. The town approve Article 9 as printed in the warrant. On behalf of the proponents, the Planning Board, Planning Board through its Chairperson, Ms. Von Mary. Ms. Von Mary.
We lost our place again, one moment, sorry. All right. So, the final three articles, are we doing them as one?
You may debate them as a single, you may present debate on nine, 10, and 11.
Okay. So, Article 9, 10, 11 really deals with what we're looking for in terms of what is submitted to the permit review, for the permit review. And we actually, contrary to what was said, we actually don't really get schematic drawings. We're actually getting extremely mature drawings, design drawings. And in those, it currently, the language currently calls for utility plans, however, they're leaving off a bunch of the utilities in those drawings. And so, like I talked about before, we want the zoning, the expectation of the zoning to align with the delivery. And when we add it into the zoning, when they go and read, and they see all the things that are required of them, they can come with their full application, including all of the utilities that we need to properly review these projects. So, here's a rendering of one of the projects that we currently, we recently have reviewed for the Center Business District and has passed. This is Elmwood. And what happens is, we receive all these plans and all these documents. We get beautiful sales pitches from the applicants, but we're actually missing the critical information that we need to the reality of what is actually going on, the impact of those utilities that are missing. In response, when we get a lot of those drawings, specifically in the Center Business District, because that's what I'm most familiar with, but we also have gotten feedback, it slows the process down, because we have to stop our review and go back to the applicant and ask them to include the equipment and give us that information so we can properly review Why is it so important to review utilities? One, it's the visual impact. This is actually the impact of what you see on the Center, in downtown, on the train station. It is visible from all the public ways. We also, why we want to review it, is because we want to deal with the heights of the proposed utilities throughout. We also want to look for screening opportunities and other unforeseen impacts, such as noise or safety, for example, as well of those units. Article 9 is specifically for Town Center. Article 10 is a special permit process, and Article 11 is a site plan review. Specifically, in Article 9 for the Town Center, we do require a utility plan, and in that plan, we would like to also have that plan show the equipment for the HVAC or otherwise. And we also would like to have on all the elevations, drawings and renderings, all the rooftop, and all the equipment located in those drawings as well. Special permit, similar, similar situation of what we're exactly looking for, along with the site plan. And it's for Article 10, is for the special permit, and Article 11 is for the site plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Von Mary. We have a recommendation from the Select Board. It's Chairperson, Mr. Colleybough. Mr. Colleybough.
Yeah, the Select Board voted unanimously to recommend favorable action on all three of these.
Further on the question, the motion comes before the town meeting on Article 9, is presented by the Planning Board. Two-thirds vote required. The Chair will attempt to voice vote in the first instance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair declares vote unanimous. Article 9 passes. This brings us to Article 10, also brought by the Planning Board under Article 10, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 9.4.5, plans of the Winchester zoning bylaw to require plans submitted for the purposes of special permits to include the location of rooftop equipment. The language is as it appears on page 11 of your motion booklet. The motion under Article 10, it's moved and seconded. The town approve Article 10 as printed in the warrant. Two-thirds vote required. Motion brought by the Planning Board, Select Board having recommended favorable action. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All those in favor, please rise. Thirty-seven.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. All those opposed, please rise. One.
Zero.
Zero.
Three.
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 Three. Hundred and thirty-two members of the town meeting having voted, eighty-eight votes required for passage, 125 members of the town meeting having voted affirmatively. Article 10 passes. This brings us to Article 11, under Article 11, to see if the town will vote to amend Section 9.5.4, application of the Winchester zoning bylaw to require plans submitted for the purposes of site plan review to include the location of rooftop equipment. The language is as set forth on page 12 of the motion booklet in front of you. The motion under Article 11, it's moved and seconded. The town vote to approve Article 11 as printed in the warrant. The motion being brought by the Planning Board, already having made its presentation, the Select Board having recommended favorable action. Two-thirds vote required. The Chair will attempt to voice vote in the first instance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The Chair declares the vote having met the two-thirds requirement, and having recognized the limited number of no votes, Chair declares the two-thirds requirement, threshold having been met, and the motion passes. This brings us to Article 12. Article 12 is a petition of 10 registered voters for the Spring 2019 Town Meeting in Winchester, Massachusetts. Under Article 12, which appears on page 13 of your motion vehicle, a citizen, motion booklet, a citizen's petition brought by Mr. Conti on behalf of the registered voters of the town. Under Article 12, it's moved and seconded, that Chapter 22 of the Code of the Town of Winchester be repealed in its entirety. The language and the prefatory language for the motion are as set forth, again, on page 13 of the motion vehicle, of the motion booklet. On behalf of the proponents, Mr. Conti. Mr. Conti.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, all town meeting members. I opposed this proposal when it was brought before town meeting last year, because, as you well know, I oppose excessive government regulation, which I believe this is to be an example of. However, I'm not unmindful of the arguments of our environmentalists, and I believe in conservation. I hate to see anything wasted. However, it is my opinion, and I think it's backed up by the actual science of the question, that the effect of this proposal is the opposite of what you have been told. I say this because plastic bags are a much more efficient mechanism than paper. Plastic bags weigh much less, they, they use far more, if you, the facts are laid out in your motion booklet there, they require 70% less energy to produce than paper bags. They take up much less space. They require, paper bags require seven times as many truckloads to deliver the same amount of bags. Plastic bags are made in this country out of natural gas. The replacement heavier bags that are called for by this bylaw that we've adopted are made primarily in China and Vietnam, and require transport across the Pacific Ocean to get here, which uses a tremendous amount of energy. Plastic bags, you were told that they take up space in landfills. Well, that may be true, but they take up a lot less space than paper bags do. And furthermore, in Winchester, we don't, our trash is not deposited into landfills. Our trash goes to a, an incinerator, which generates electricity. So, you know, we're not taking up landfill space. We're also, the United States is also not responsible for the, all the plastic that's found in the oceans of the world. Ninety percent of that, of the plastic, and this has been documented, comes from Asia and Africa. Only 1% of the plastic that's found in the ocean comes from the United States. So, we're not decimating the seabirds and, and other aquatic creatures. You know, the effect of this proposal is to require much more expenditure of energy to make paper bags, much more use of water and other natural resources to bake, plate paper bags, which are, by the way, not as efficient. They, they rip, they, they're not, they don't have the carrying capacity. And furthermore, most people I know use plastic bags as trash bags, so they are recycled in that sense. So... So, the effect of this is to make people buy more plastic bags to make up for the grocery bags that they would otherwise be using, which is self-defeating. Now, this is a trendy feel-good proposal, which doesn't have the, the actual effect that you were told that it would have. So, I think it's counterproductive and that we should do the right thing, and, not the trendy thing and the feel-good thing, but the right thing, and go back to a more, a much more efficient, energy-efficient and more convenient use of plastic bags instead of mandating people use paper bags or heavier bags, which, you know, are potential disease carriers, and that nobody washes those reusable bags. So, you have a little meat juice that might sip into the bag, and the next thing you know, you're harboring bacteria or even possibly vermin. So, you know, it really makes no sense. I ask that we act favorably upon this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Further on the question, majority vote required. Vote to repeal the ban on plastic bags as set forth in Mr. Conti's motion. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion fails. Mr. Conti? Second. All those in favor of repealing the ban on plastic bags as set forth in Mr. Conti's motion, please rise, and the tellers will come. One. Two. Eight. Nine. All those opposed, please rise. Fourteen. Fourteen. Twenty-five. Thirty-five. Thirty-nine. Majority vote required, twenty having voted in the affirmative, one hundred and thirteen in the negative, the motion fails. This brings us to Article 13. Article 13 brought by the Select Board to see if the town will accept the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53F and three-quarters, to establish a special revenue fund known as the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund. The motion is as set forth on page 15 of the motion booklet, and under Article 13, it's moved in second to the town approve Article 13 as printed in the warrant. On behalf of the proponents, the Select Board, by their Chairperson, Mr. Colley-Beaufort. Mr. Colley-Beaufort?
Yeah, so, this article relates to the money that WinCam gets from the cable fees, the franchise fees that we have with the cable providers in town, Comcast and Verizon. And in the past, they've been getting the checks directly from the cable providers. State law no longer allows that, so we have to set a fund that then has to be appropriated. So, what this motion does is gets us in compliance with the law. So, we recommend that you vote yes on this.
May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee voted unanimously for favorable action.
Motion comes before the town meeting under Article 13, as previously presented by the Chair. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to Article 14. Under Article 14, it's moved in seconded, that Article 14 be postponed to a time certain, that time being next Monday, May 13th, the next session of this town meeting. The Select Board advises that they are waiting for responses to a request for proposal that are not due until Thursday of this week. On the motion to postpone to a time certain, that time being the next session of this town meeting, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to Article 15, to determine whether the town will vote to accept Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 55C, to authorize the creation of a municipal affordable housing trust fund or take any other action in relation thereto. Under Article 15, as it appears on page 18 of the motion booklet, it's moved in second to the town vote to approve Article 15 as printed in the warrant. On behalf of the proponents, the Select Board? Mr. Betancourt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, town meeting. This is a, an article to establish municipal affordable housing trust, and it's sponsored by the Select Board, the Housing Partnership Board, and the Planning Board. We discuss 40B here pretty regularly, and I know town meetings become pretty familiar with it. The actual legislative term for it is the Anti-Snob Zoning Act, so it's something that you might not know. And so, it puts things in context, I think, what the legislature was looking to do. As you know, the state requires municipalities to be, have ten percent of their total housing units being deed restricted affordable housing. We currently sit significantly below that at two percent. And that leaves us exposed to developers who can circumvent our local zoning and really have the choice of how they want Winchester to look and feel as opposed to how we want it to. So, what we have endeavored to do is pursue that ten percent goal incrementally and develop forty affordable units a year to get into a safe harbor with the state that would allow us to turn away some of those proposals. But we have to, we have to be developing units. So, the Select Board has worked over the past year with the Massachusetts Area Planning Council and community stakeholders and residents to complete a housing production plan. And in February of this past year, that plan was approved. And as I said, that plan is to produce affordable housing. One of the main recommendations of the plan to achieve safe harbor is to establish an affordable housing trust. And this would allow Winchester to be engaged in the local housing market as participants and not just respondents. Winchester, through the Affordable Housing Trust, can facilitate public-private partnerships with developers, banks, and nonprofit housing corporations. And currently, there is no mechanism for Winchester to engage in the market and develop affordable housing. It's a very cumbersome process where we have to come before town meeting and wait six months, and it's, as you know, the housing market in Winchester moves much more brisk than that. And currently, there are one hundred and ten communities in Massachusetts that have adopted this Affordable Housing Trust. I don't know why I just did that that way, but. And the purpose, as stated through Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 55C, is so the town can establish a public trust to provide for the creation and preservation of affordable housing in municipalities for the benefit of low and moderate income households. So, what the Affordable Housing Trust can do for us is, as I mentioned, we can engage in real estate activity, we can collect funds from a variety of sources, we can provide financial support for the construction of affordable homes by private developers, nonprofit or for-profit, we can rehabilitate existing homes to convert to affordable housing, and we can increase affordability in new housing development projects. We can use surplus municipal land or buildings to develop. We can preserve properties faced with expired affordability restrictions and several other options. And one of the other benefits of it is we can use the Affordable Housing Trust to educate and advocate for further affordable housing initiatives, which has been a major priority of the town over the past few years. Just a couple examples here, in Carlisle, Mass., their Affordable Housing Trust engaged in a development project to fund the pre-development of a large project at Benfield Farms. And, and over, they use their trust to develop a project off Chiva Road, and so that's an affordable housing opportunity for someone there. So, it's a great asset to have. So, some of the possible funding sources would be the Select Board Housing Fund. Over the years, the Select Board has maintained a housing fund which has been made up of different payments for mitigation for other housing developments over town. The problem is that as that, that, that fund grew, we couldn't really use it to leverage housing needs because the cost of housing increased so rapidly here. So, there's less than a million dollars here, so that would be a good investment for us, and hopefully we will come back to town meeting for that. Linkage payments, as an example, when we do the Winning Farm Project, as you remember, we had the developer give a million dollars from that project to the town. That could be applied to the Affordable Housing Trust. Inclusionary zoning payments, we can negotiate developer fees, payments from different ordinances, cell tower, tower lease payments. One of the most commonly used payment structures for these trusts is the Community Preservation Act. It's, I know town meeting has turned down the CPA over the years, but it may in the future be a good idea for us to consider that. I know that we're under a lot of financial pressure right now, but I think in the long run, it would, it would make sense for us. So, what happens after the town meeting accept this? There would be a Board of Trustees established, there would be a minimum of five members, and one of those would be a Select Board member. There would be a declaration of trust, and that is, establishes the rules and the regulations for the trust itself. And there's an action plan and a budget that is created as well, that's a formal process through the trust. And then we would return to town meeting for funding. So, say we wanted to convert the Select Board's housing fund over to the, to the trust, we would come back here for your approval to do that. If we wanted to take a portion of the Winning Farm linkage payment, we would be back here to do that, once this trust has been established. That's it, so. Thank you.
In further support of the question, the Winchester Housing Partnership Committee, through its Chairperson, John Serbier, Mr. Serbier?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. By unanimous vote, the Housing Partnership Board voted to serve as a cosponsor of this article and supports approval of the article. I want to just amplify on a few of the points made by Select Board Member Michael Betancourt. Since this provision for municipal housing trust was approved by the legislature in 2005, as Michael said, it's been adopted by one hundred and ten Massachusetts communities, or roughly a third of the Commonwealth. This is something that is working, we feel it can work in Winchester. Winchester is facing growing housing affordability challenges, which a municipal housing trust can help address. And I want to just give two references. Between the year 2000 and 2018, the median sales price for a single-family house in Winchester increased by one hundred and forty percent. In contrast, the median household income over that same period rose by just under sixty percent. What this means is that a household having an annual income of a hundred thousand dollars a year can now afford to purchase only six percent of the housing that is available in Winchester. So, think about that. The housing trust can help work on that problem. The trust will be beneficial over a range of income levels. It is not limited to just serving households earning less than eighty percent of the Boston area median, which is the income level that counts for the subsidized housing in a toy. If desired, moderate-income housing can be provided that serves households up to a hundred or even a hundred and twenty percent. The law does not specify those income limits. The trust provides focused organizational and financial capabilities to help implement Winchester's approved housing production plan. In this sense, it is a foundational element that provides for local control of the town's housing actions. The desire is for the Board of Trustees to have expertise in real estate development, banking, housing finance, and law, as well as affordable housing. So, that's the kind of focused expertise that's being brought. Initial funding for the trust is likely to come from the Select Board's existing Affordable Housing Fund. But importantly, the trust also will be able to access and leverage a broader range of financial resources than presently is possible. Importantly, the trust will be a public entity. It is subject to standard public procurement, conflict of interest, and public meeting laws. The organization, budget, and management process will be fully transparent. So, in summary, the trust broadens the range of financial resources that can be accessed and leveraged, and enables the town to respond to real estate opportunities in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Serbier. Mr. Betancourt, did you wish to conclude your remarks? Very briefly?
I'll be, I'll be brief. I neglected to thank some of the participants in this conversation. Certainly, Alan Rogers and John Serbier have done amazing work, and it's a tough subject that isn't always welcome. And certainly, Maureen Meister, the Planning Board, has been instrumental in this, as well as Marty Jones. So, again, thank you for your leadership. John has been long committed to this, this process, and so I just wanted the town meeting to acknowledge that and say thank you to John specifically. Thank you.
May we have a recommendation from the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted unanimously for favorable action, as this is just the authorization to create the fund only, not an appropriation, and it's part of the plan to get more control in the 40B process.
The proponents have represented that the Planning Board is a co-proponent and stands in favor, Ms. Von Behring, or Ms. Meister? Ms. Meister, I'm sorry.
It's always hard to anticipate what debate will proceed, but I want to say that whatever you're thinking about, the affordable housing topic, that it's there, it's a state statute, and that working with 40B and addressing it is in the interest, I think, of most people in the town, and you understand that. The, creating the housing trust gives us more opportunities to work with a pot of money that already exists but can't be easily spent toward affordable housing. So, that's one thing you've heard about, the Select Board has a housing fund. We have gotten money from Winning Farm, that's another way money has come in through this negotiation. And also, even at this town meeting, we extended our inclusionary housing requirement so that we do get this, this opportunity to get a unit, but we could also take a payment instead and use that money toward investing in existing, an existing unit, and many communities do that as well. So, this is just allowing us to become more nimble, as the Select Board and town meeting just can't move quickly to make some sort of purchase investment in adding units that qualify under the state statute, Chapter 40B, as affordable. So, we do recommend favorable action. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meister. Further on the question, Mr. Conti?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is a worthy proposal, if it could be confined just to using the funds that the town currently has available for affordable housing. However, I'm making this statement for the, those of you who are listening at home, who I want to predict to you that next year, we're going to hear a proposal, as the member of the Board of Selectmen indicated, to adopt the Community Preservation Act, which will be used, said to fund this, to provide additional funding for this trust. And that will mean a surtax on your property taxes of, I believe, it's as much as two or three percent on top. That's with the Community Preservation Act, and that's why we voted against it many years ago when it was first brought up. But my prediction to the public at large is that that's the next thing we're going to be hearing from, that this trust needs additional funding, and why don't we adopt the Community Preservation Act? And that will result in an additional tax burden at a time when we're facing tremendous calls for revenues to rebuild our schools. We're going to now have another burden foisted upon our taxpayers. So, I'm predicting that that's what we're going to be hearing next. So, think that, keep that in mind when you vote, and I'm voting no.
Thank you, Mr. Conti. Further on the question, Mr. Miller?
John Miller from Precinct, I'm actually not opposed to this, and I would be surprised, maybe some people would be surprised, but my concern is I spend a lot of time in surprised, but my concern is that I've spent a lot of time in public-private partnerships, the intricacies of having arrangements between a public body and private developers for particular projects, and comparing the apples of one project versus the donuts of another project. I think that the select board should think very carefully about conflicts of interest and making sure that there is real transparency, because I think what you'll find is that there will be situations where private developers propose and offer funds in order to advance their project over, and you'll have different proposals from others. And I think the nuts and bolts of implementing this fairly and without perceived or actual conflicts is going to require some careful attention, and it might come back to bite somebody sometime if that's not done. But I'm not opposed to it. I think we need to do something to address, get ahead of 40B. But I just caution that, it's been my experience on these public-private partnerships, that developers have their interests, they're all knowable, but how those are fielded and handled by a public body, when a very different proposal is compared against another one, it's very difficult to do well.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Further in the question, Mr. Wilson.
So I've actually tried to read the housing production plan a couple of times, in draft and then here. My question is, how realistic is it to even believe that we'll ever get ahead of 40B here? As I read this, saying that to get a one-year safe harbor, we're going to produce 40 affordable units. And affordable means not what you and I think of affordable, but deed-restricted affordable. And so if it's not, and there's a strange provision that if in a 40B project, if it's a rental project, then they all count as affordable, even though, what, 70 percent of them are market rate or something? I really don't think that 40B is realistic. I think it's a bad law. I think we're never going to get ahead of it, and I think we're fooling ourselves to think we are. I'd love to hear that I'm wrong. I'm often wrong, but I'd love to hear in this instance that I've done wrong.
Town meeting member makes an inquiry about whether or not the purposes served by the creation of this fund will be realistic, given the great standards that must be met in order to avoid the implication of Chapter 40B. Something other than the Browning quote, "Man's reach should exceed his grasp," or "What's a heaven for?" That's all I have. So you guys, if you have something more material. Mr. Goliath from the Select Board.
So one thing we always hear when a developer comes in to build a big development, like we just heard at River Street, is that people say, "We don't want all of the 40B development to all happen in one place. We want a few here, a few there." Now, are we going to get to 40 units, a few here, a few there? No. But the Housing Trust Fund will allow us to do a few here, a few there, when paired with maybe smaller developments instead of larger developments can help us to get to safe harbor. So that's what this Housing Trust Fund helps with. It's one of, I showed in my presentation a week ago and many hours ago, there's like 40 or 50 different strategies. This is one of them. And so we are pursuing the ones that make sense to be able to produce more units.
Thank you, Mr. Goliath. Yes, sir.
Mr. Looney asks the question, "How many housing permits are issued in a year by the town?" An approximation, Mr. Zakelli? Is there somebody from the town staff who might be able to provide an approximation? In response to the town meeting member's question, about 1,000 permits, about 25 of those with respect to the construction of new single-family homes. Thank you very much, Mr. Wowe. Appreciate it. Further in the question, majority vote required. The motion comes before the town meeting on Article 15, as previously presented by the chair. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to Article 16. Under Article 16, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court to enact legislation regarding property tax relief for senior citizens. And the article under Article 16, as is set forth on pages 19 and 20 of the motion booklet, under Article 16, it's moved and seconded, the town approved Article 16, as printed in the warrant. On behalf of its proponent, the Select Board, Mr. Betancourt.
In February 2017, the Select Board, working with the town manager, convened a working group to discuss affordability and ways that we could better provide resources to residents after we saw a really high increase of demand for assistance. The town then embarked on a community-wide needs assessment, and the goal was to identify and prioritize the concerns of Winchester residents, and particularly around social services, well-being, and civic engagement. And in the fall of 2018, after a year of outreach and analysis, we completed the needs assessment and initiated a new town human services working group, and that's led by the town manager and Council on Aging. Issues related to cost of living and cost of housing emerged unsurprisingly as the major concerns for the community. In fact, 62, over 62 percent of the respondents said that high cost of living was the most frequently selected issue that impacts them. Quote from one of the human service providers indicates this, and they say that, "We see some seniors who are in very prestigious homes, who can't afford to heat them, or they're on a very strict budget, and that's where we see a lot of the stigma." The median price for a single-family home, it's increased now, but exceeded $1 million in 2017, and it really is quite a high number. And the rental unit for a two-bedroom unit exceeded $2,000 as well, and again, is significantly higher now. One of the survey respondents also shared with us that Winchester is an economically gated community. You have your average 50- to 60-year-old living here, who knows that their kids aren't coming back to Winchester anytime soon, and the town is becoming unaffordable. As of 2016, 16 percent of Winchester residents were age 65 and older, and that's an increase of 7 percent since 2011. And older adults were identified through the needs assessment as a vulnerable subpopulation of the community. The population of residents aged 65 to 74 increased by 15 percent between 2011 and 2016, and the population of residents 85 and older increased by 9.5 percent. So we are proposing a senior tax relief exemption here. The guidelines for the assistance, it's a fairly streamlined process. There's an application for tax relief for the town, and that's for residents that are 65 and older. They must have lived at the same residence for 10 consecutive years. They must not have assets that exceed $780,000, and they must meet the other state circuit-breaker guidelines. The household credit, the Select Board will vote annually to set a percentage match between 50 and 200 percent of the circuit-breaker credit. In 2018, the maximum credit was $1,100. So the range of that credit would be from $550, which would be 50 percent, to $2,200, which would be 200 percent. And this allows the Select Board the flexibility to adjust the credit based on the current year's budget and revenue. So the next steps for adoption of this is after town meeting. The home rule petition will be presented through the legislature for passage, which we anticipate will be enacted favorably by fall of 2019. And hopefully, we can join other communities that have embraced this exemption, including Reading, Lexington, Sudbury, Newton, and Wakefield. Happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Betancourt. We have a recommendation from the Finance Committee. It's the chairperson, Mr. Cattillo. Mr. Cattillo.
The Finance Committee voted unanimously for favorable action. We didn't see this as tax loss, just a shift or reallocation. In terms of the actual size of the shift, the numbers that we were able to get a hold of, that roughly 300 people could take advantage of this, at the average, 1,100 per, that Mr. Betancourt just highlighted, that'd be a max shift of about 330K or .3 percent of total tax revenue.
Further in the question, the motion comes before the town meeting under Article 16, as previously presented by the chair. Mr. Shymets. Mr. Shymets.
Peter Shymets, Precinct 5. There's already provisions in the town for something like this, right? Where you have tax forgiveness until they sell the property, so that's deferred? Yeah, but the question is here is, is this a tax deferral till sales? Or is this actually tax forgiveness, or somebody else is paying the money? It's not clear to me what's happening with the money here.
Town meeting member asked whether it's deferral, forgiveness, and whether or not there are other programs that address similar goals currently in existence. In response, the Select Board, through Mr. Betancourt. Mr. Betancourt.
This isn't a tax deferment. The town does have a program for that. I think that we're going to be addressing that. But this is actually a credit, and it's based on the state circuit breaker. This is really a first step for the town. I think that when you look at things like a $780,000 measure to prevent people from applying for it, in Winchester, that can be a real burden. So I think that we're looking to move this forward the way that it is and kind of build on it in the future. But to answer your question, Mr. Shymets, it's a credit that will be spread out through the other taxpayers here in town. So they will not be obligated for that amount at some point later.
Yes, Mr. Shymets. So the answer to your question was, it's not a deferral, it's forgiveness. And yes, there is another program, and that other program, deferral, is the subject of the next Article 17.
Okay, so there's words like credit and circuit breaker, but so just to walk through the steps here. So I don't have $780,000, I'm older than I am really, I apply for this thing, I'm given $1,100 worth of tax forgiveness. Does that come off the tax rolls now? Or is that now spread out through everybody else in the town?
The town meeting member asked as to the percentage that Mr. Cattillo estimated of $330,000. How will that additional tax obligation be met? Will we simply not realize those amounts, or will they be picked up by the other taxpayers?
They will be picked up by the other taxpayers, and that amount will be seen for that qualified resident as a reduction in their tax bill, and then it'll be spread out.
Yes. Further in the question, Mr. Marman, and then Mr. Wilson.
Precinct 1. The rules that the state uses for the senior circuit breaker says that the resident shouldn't pay more than 10 percent of their income on real estate taxes, and helps them if they do. If we lower their income taxes, then the state will have a smaller obligation to those people. So it sounds to me like we're going to be helping out the state as well as our own people. That doesn't really sound like a good idea to me.
Mr. Wilson, further in the question.
So my question is, if it's a tax credit, would it then be a line item in the budget? Because we would have to fund it out of the levy, and if so, what are the estimates of what this line item would be?
The town meeting member asks how it will be accounted for in the presentation of the budget, and what is the estimate? The chair believes he recalls that Mr. Cattillo's estimate was $330,000. Mr. Cattillo, in response to the town meeting member's question.
So that is the correct estimate that we calculated? In terms of how it's actually handled, I'm going to have to defer to Stacy on that one.
Stacy Ward, the town comptroller, has not yet developed any protocol for how it will be handled, but I think it's fair to say that it will be identified in the budget to the town meeting members, and either through the comptroller's financial report or the Finance Committee's presentation, we will articulate the amount. At the moment, estimated to be $330,000. Further in the question, Mr. Richard.
It's a hard thing to speak against, I'm for any tax going down for anybody, pretty much. And I will soon hopefully be in this group. But I did have a question. I saw that the average house in Winchester is roughly $1 million, and I thought I saw that the assets to qualify for this have to be limited to 700 some odd. Is your principal residence counted within those assets? In which case, who's going to qualify?
Town meeting member asked if the asset cap is $780,000, and the average home is worth $1 million, are many people going to qualify? And so is one's personal residence included in the calculation of assets? Mr. Betancourt.
Yes, it is. And as I mentioned, I think one of the hard parts about us using legislation that exists out there is that it doesn't necessarily work for Winchester in the best way possible. So I think that we would look at this as getting in on the ground floor, and then town meeting would look at changes to our local legislation down the road, and certainly increasing that allowance is something that is going to be necessary. As I showed you from the slide, there are a lot of residents here that are living in homes that they can't afford, and that is one of the major issues in trying to keep residents that have been here and committed to Winchester for a long period of time, have been paying taxes for a long time, and we want to make the commitment to them that they've made to us.
Ma'am, and then Mr. Johnson.
Hi, I'm Joyce Westner from Precinct 5, and usually I'm on the side of the tax-and-spend liberals. But this is about me. This is about, I'm already in this category, and I'm overhoused. My house is too big for my husband and me, and we're paying about $14,000 in taxes. But our house is worth about the average of what the town's taxes are. It's worth about, I mean, what the town's houses are worth. It's worth about $1 million. So I qualify in every possible way, except my house is average for Winchester, so I wouldn't be able to take advantage of it. But I am going to pay for those 600 people who do qualify by having my taxes go up by about 3 percent, I think is what I heard said, 3 percent. So I don't know, maybe that's the wrong number. But in any case, the fact that they're going to go up even a nickel is a little, I'm being very selfish about this. I just don't like it because I'm being selfish. That's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the percentage of the tax levy that needs to be covered is $330,000, which I believe is about .1 percent, .3 percent, not 3 percent. So yes, further in the question, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening. I think this is a very good program. Please remember, this is for the citizens of our town, that have lived in this town for a very long time, that have contributed based upon their volunteerism, they've paid their tax burden, and it helps them stay in the community. Yes, this is only a beginning, and like the Select Board said, it can be tweaked later on. This is for the citizens of town, they have a minimum or a maximum $780,000 equity in their home, not what their house is worth, lest their debt service. It also provides them the opportunity, a little bit of an opportunity, to subsidize them to stay in the community. As we all know, our seniors are a great asset to all of us, and every time we lose a senior that moves out of town to Woben or another town, we lose something. We lose their input, we lose their history, we lose their knowledge. And another thing which we're not saying here is, when we sell that... And another thing which we're not saying here is, when we sell that home, chances are the tax expense to the people, to the town, from someone buying it, will be substantially more. What I mean by that, I'm not trying to be snobby or anything, but if that two-to-three-bedroom $700,000 house is sold, most likely someone will move to the community because they want to better themselves like the previous people. They want to become part of the community. They want their children educated in our community because of the great schools we have. This is a program that keeps our seniors in the house, delays the sale of the house, and possibly can save the town much more money in the long run, the budget, because if a senior stays in a house, they're not going to have any kids to go through the school system. So I would ask that you consider this, think of the senior citizens that really need it, and support it. And I know the Board of Selectmen will work diligently to tweaking it in the next several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Further in the question, the motion comes before the town meeting. Majority vote required. Under Article 16, all those in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Ayes, have it. The motion passes. This brings us to Article 17. Under Article 17, to see if the town will vote to adjust the current eligibility limits for property tax deferrals under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A. Under this article, it's moved in second, that the town vote to increase the gross receipts that senior citizens may have in the prior calendar year to be eligible to defer property taxes under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 41A, from $53,000 to $60,000, all as set forth on page 21 of your motion booklet, in support of the article of the Select Board. Ms. Verdickio?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As Mr. Bettencourt ran through, this also arises from the Needs Assessment and the discussion around the recent operating override, where we, you know, focused on the fact that there are a lot of longtime town residents living in houses that have appreciated greatly in value, and who are paying greater and greater tax bills. And this program does allow them to defer payment of the tax, rather than it being forgiven or exempted. The town does not give up the revenue from these taxes. They become a lien on the property, and they accrue interest and are not due until the resident sells the property or passes away. So this is a provision that a lot of towns have. We've, Winchester first signed on to this in 1991, and the last time we increased the income eligibility limit was in 2013. Unlike the exemption that Mr. Bettencourt was talking about, this does not have a, an assets, total assets eligibility restriction. This would be available to somebody whose house did exceed that $700,000 amount, and would allow them to use their fixed income, their retirement income, on living expenses rather than their taxes. So we're looking to increase the income limit from what it is now, $53,000. And we're asking for permission to raise it to $60,000. As I mentioned, the tax that's deferred accumulates with 4% interest as a lien on the property until it's sold. Applicants must have lived in Winchester for 10 years, and have lived in this property for a long time, as many, many people have. And if this is something you're concerned about, the total amount of the taxes that are deferred cannot exceed 50% of the full value of their property. Right now, 13 properties are participating in this, or 13 property owners are participating in this deferral program in the town. So the tot, and the total amount of the principal or the deferred taxes for the whole townwide is about $500,000. No, less than 500, that's $449,000, and there's about $180,000 in interest due. The longest deferral began in 1997. There was a significant uptick in the past five years, but it's still relatively low participation, and new applicants are being, some new applicants are being considered now. What we're looking to do is make this more available for more people because of the recent Needs Assessment, and that, you know, we've really focused on if the, these people are living among us and have contributed a lot over the years, and are valuable residents in our, in our community. And we want to see if we can, by raising the income eligibility limit a bit, have a little bit wider participation. I think that's my last slide. Yeah. So we hope you will go favorably, favorably on this article.
We have a recommendation from the Finance Committee. It's Chairperson, Mr. Cattillo. Mr. Cattillo?
So the Finance Committee voted unanimously for favorable action. This is a deferral program only, so it's not a loss of revenue. Admittedly, we didn't have good data on the potential take rate here. Susan highlighted what the current impact is. But we felt that since the plan is already in place with the cycle of people taking advantage of it, and the deferrals being reclaimed, that the incremental impact didn't seem that it would be that great, and that was the reason for our approval.
Further in the question? You certainly can.
Along with the prior article, Finance Committee will commit to making sure that we provide reporting on what this looks like, assuming we can get the data next year as well. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Cattillo. Mr. Jarius? Go ahead, Mr. Jarius. Just shout it out. I'll interpret. The town meeting member commands the Select Board for following through on this and the other articles to provide senior tax relief. But asked the question, how was the $60,000 income limit arrived at? And rather than returning at irregular intervals at, to this town meeting to set these amounts, wouldn't it make more sense to have a reference index from which we could evaluate this and adjust without further action by the town meeting? In response to the town meeting member's question, Ms. Verdickio, Ms. Verdickio?
So the, the Board did discuss trying to develop a policy first about coming back and periodically changing the income limit. But since it hasn't been done for over six years, we assume that with the automatic 2.5% increase and the overrides that we've passed, that taxes have increased, you know, about $1,000 a year. So we wanted to do this, this change now, and then keep track, and have some data to develop a policy about how to go about this in a more regular way, or on a more regular basis.
As we abbreviate that in the finance world, WAG. Further on the question. The motion comes before the town meeting under Article 17, as previously read by the Chair. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. This brings us to Article 18. Article 18 brought by the Select Board. Under Article 18, see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board for purposes establishing, constructing, operating, and maintaining sewer and drain lines to acquire by purchase. The motion is as set forth on page 22 of the motion booklet, and under Article 18, it's moved in second, as the town approved Article 18 as printed in the warrant. On behalf of the proponents, the Select Board, Town Council, Mr. Mercorius. Mr. Mercorius?
Thank you. I'll be very brief. The Article 18 requests authorization for the Select Board to acquire a permanent utility easement, which is required on private property at 123 Wildwood Street for construction of the Wildwood Street Drainage Improvement Project. This is a, an ongoing drainage improvement project. The need for the utility easement is twofold. One is to confirm an existing town-owned sewer line that's actually in place. The records are not clear that there was an adequate town meeting action for that sewer line. And two, the, to obtain a drainage line, which is a different in kind, to connect the existing drainage system in Wildwood Street with the proposed infiltration system in Westside Field. The area shown in your motion, you'll see there's a very small triangle. It's about 300 square feet total on private property for that. The town staff, as well as engineers from Weston and Sampson, have been working to minimize any effect on the private property owner, and have begun to discuss this with the private property owner, as well as we have been discussing it with their council to try to assuage any concerns. So the request is simply to have the authority to obtain that easement in order to continue the project.
We have a recommendation from the Finance Committee. Mr. Cattillo?
Finance Committee voted unanimously for favorable action, as this is just an authorization to negotiate, though for a project that is quite expensive and will presumably get more expensive with delay.
Pointed endorsement there. Two-thirds vote required to authorize the purchase of land. All those in favor, Chair will attempt a voice vote. I'll remind, Chair will mind everybody. It's 10:15 at night. Chair's a little tired. All those in favor? Any opposed? Chair declares vote unanimous. Article 18 passes. This brings us at 10:15 in the evening to the finance articles, since I think we have enough momentum to finish them at our next session, and there's little likelihood we would finish them tonight. Seems like an exceedingly poor course of action to undertake the debate of financial issues, starting at 10:15. And accordingly, the Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn until next Monday night, May 13th, and thanks you for your patience. So moved, all in favor? Any opposed? See you next Monday night.
Good evening once again, ladies and gentlemen. And as you see, town meeting, session number two of Winchester's Spring 2019 Town Meeting has just wrapped up. So let's do a recap of what was covered tonight. The moderator opened with some personal comments on civility at town meeting. Reconsider, the first item was reconsideration of Article 2, which was the review process for special permits in the Center Business District. The town meeting, this was to change the current process, which was just enacted a year or so ago, which was to do a subcommittee of the Historical Board and the Design Review Committee, instead of the full boards, to make recommendations to the Planning Board on projects for Center Business District special permits. We heard from a town meeting member who said he was against it because the process is streamlined now. Brian Zekely, the town planner, said that the full committees would have varied expertise. And Mariano Galiboff, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, was against reconsideration because he said there was no new information. So reconsideration of Article 2 failed. Moved on to Article 7. 7 and 8 sought, again, zoning articles, were to add the height of certain roof equipment, limits on the height that, which would also be considered in the overall height of the building. In other words, if you had a structure that was five feet high on the top of a building, it would actually, that would, that would be the new limit of the height. So it would actually push the rest of the building down by about five feet. We, we heard from Heather von Mering from the Planning Board, who said that the Planning Board's opinion was the mechanicals could be concealed in the roof. So the Select Board also supported that. Article 7 and 8 were the same article, just applying to two different, two different districts. Both of them passed despite hearing from Greg Rabby from the Chamber of Commerce, who said the Chamber wants character, maintain the character of the town, but also wants to encourage development. If it's too, he said, if the regulations are too restrictive, it will encourage 40B projects, and will, the town will lose the tax revenue. He said the Chamber felt that the best process was to wait for a master plan. However, again, Article 7 and 8 were passed, adding those roof, roof height, equipment height restrictions. Articles 21, and Article 21 was to authorize the Selectmen to negotiate some easements with the MBTA as they move forward with the planning for the reconstruction of the downtown train station. Some of the elements of that train station are going to intrude on town-owned property, so that the Select Board would have to authorize an easement to the MBTA. That passed. Another, another item that was passed was proposal to negotiate to acquire a small piece of land in the Waterfield Lot downtown. According to the diagram, it looks like the entrance driveway to the upper parking lot on Waterfield Road. This was to authorize the Selectmen to proceed to, to acquire that, negotiate to acquire that. That also passed. So then we had a recess. After the recess, the Articles 9, 10, and 11 were zoning articles from the Planning Board, and those were applying to three different districts, Center Business District, and to, I'm sorry, to Center Business District for applications for special permits, and for site plan review applications. And that indicated that all rooftop equipment must be shown on the plans that were submitted for approval. Heather von Mering said there was visual impact, and there was also screening and noise mitigation could be done. Those three articles do include all, again, include all plans submitted for site plan review, would have to show all of the equipment to be installed on a roof. All three articles were passed. Anthony Conde put in an article to repeal the plastic bag ban. That was Article 12. That failed. Article 13, an item close to our heart here. This was a, an article to accept the provisions, the new state law that requires that payments by the cable companies for PEG access, which is what we are, public education and government access channels, those payments must go to the town, then be remitted to the cable station. Again, we heard from Chairman of the Select Board who said that this was merely to accept a existing state law. So that passed. Article 14 regarding land on Horn Pond Rock was postponed until next Monday. Article 15 was the motion to create an affordable housing trust fund with the, with the Select Board. This was a more streamlined way for the town to reach its 10% affordable housing goal. The town can collect funds from, collect funds and enter into projects that would increase the affordable housing stock for the town. Source of those funds would generally be mitigation funds from developers and Community Preservation Act funds, should the town decide to adopt that. That passed. Articles 16 and 17 were, were regarding property tax relief. Article 16, property tax relief for senior citizens, set about 100 people, 100, 300 residents qualify, and it set the qualifications for some property tax relief. That was passed. Article 17 was establishing annual and adjustable limits for eligibility for tax deferral. In other words, for some citizens to defer the taxes on their property. What happens is they can defer the taxes of the town. The town holds off on collecting them, but attaches a lien to the property for the tax revenue and interest. That passed. And the final article of the evening was Article 18, to allow for a sewer, to negotiate a sewer line easement on Wildwood Street about where Wildwood Street transitions into Johnson Road. Johnson Road. Again, to allow the town to go forward and negotiate with the owner of that property for an easement. And that passed. So busy town meeting tonight. It is a little bit late, and the budget will probably be considered, should be considered at the next town meeting, which will be next Monday. So we thank you for joining us here tonight at WindCam. I will be back next Monday to bring you summaries of our third session of Winchester Spring Town Meeting. For all of us here at WindCam, we thank you for joining us. I'm Alan Iden. Have a great night.[635.35]